...that Buffalo Public Schools in. So, I don't think it's just legacy costs. If you look at the Say Yes evaluation of the district, what they've determined is probably less than forty percent of that $26,000 a year, which incidentally does not include, Say Yes does not include promised neighborhood, does not include the improvement grants. Less than forty percent goes into instruction from the classroom. Specifically to your point, I don't think we're going to be able to move the outcomes for our kids until we start looking at creating a real dynamic instructional relationship between teachers and students, between teachers, students, and parents, and administrators of the building. I think teachers need the support in the way of training and other kinds of issues for the classroom, but when less than forty percent of that money goes into instruction, that gives you some idea of why we're having trouble moving the baseline resources, evidenced by the commissioner about a week ago in an article in Buffalo News. And I think the Buffalo News on Sunday issued the warning, right? We don't have much time left. This board doesn't have much time left. There's an urgency. And when you hear the community from the parents, and you hear from the Buffalo News, and you hear from the Commissioner of Education, and you hear from the business community, there's a message there that we better listen to, and we better listen to very, very carefully. Thank you.
When you're talking about outcomes, where do those occur in the classroom? And if you are in the classroom like I am, you have to build that trust and respect with your student to have that outcome, or to have that positive outcome. And I've seen that myself. Now, when you have a situation where you have teachers that aren't respected and don't have a contract for ten years, that's a lack of respect. They'll probably do the bare minimum, just to get by, and when the clock strikes, they're going to leave. Because they're not seen as being respected and validated. So the outcomes will occur when everybody in the process is respected and validated. I truly believe that. Also, you know, this Educators Action Plan stated that the principals really didn't have much of a say in how money was spent, the staff that they hired, and how to actually run the school that they actually oversee. You have to have a really good supervisor at your school, and that's what the principal is. But if the principal is hand tied because they don't have the resources, or they don't have the autonomy to run their schools, you won't have those outcomes. And I just want to say something. In terms of the $26,000, I agree business first, who is the preeminent authority on, you know, everybody looks at that as achievement levels, and they go to that as in terms of achievement levels, you know, socioeconomic issues in terms of achievement. And their figure is $19,000. So I think sometimes that if you're going to be an alarmist, you're going to use that figure. I don't think it's that odd. But I also think that even $19,000 is maybe just a little bit too much, you know, in terms of outcomes. But I also think that if you handle your situation at the classroom level, at the school level, you'll have outcomes. It won't matter what program you have. We've been educating people for 200 years, little shacks in Kansas and Arkansas where one teacher, and she taught kids from K to 12, and it works. Thank you.
Thank you. With $26,000 per year, thank you, I talk loud, so I thought everyone might be able to hear me. With $26,000 per year, we have to look at professional development for our teachers to make certain that they have all of the tools that they need, the tools that are coming into school. I have been an advocate in getting our teachers back into the school that we had before, our attendance teachers, making sure that our students are back in school. And if they're not in school, they are going out to make visits to see why not. We'd like to see an improvement in that. We'd like to make sure that if the students are in school, that they're getting the quality education that they should be getting by having the teachers know what is expected of them on a daily basis. And with professional development, that will occur. So we look at student attendance, we look at student achievement. In order for a student to achieve, they must be in school every day. Now, with the monies that we have, we have to make certain there's equity across the board. We cannot have X number of dollars for one school while we have another school that is suffering and don't have the books that are needed, or the technology that is needed in today's society. So we need to make sure that the money is spent wisely, and in order to do that, we have to make sure the teachers are properly trained.
One of the things that we need is transparency and accountability. We need to have parents have a say in major decisions that affect their children. We need to know where the money runs, who's responsible for what, in order to find out where are the problems, what are the solutions. In terms of our graduation rates, we are about to, the board is about to pass a code of conduct that changes the school climate very significantly. They are changing the code of conduct from a punitive one to a progressive one with restorative justice. In other cities, such as Denver and Baltimore, where similar codes of conduct have been used, it has decreased the suspension rate by forty percent. It also decreases occupancy, and those are the main triggers that help you figure graduation rates. It raises those. We have to look at all different ways of dealing with our schools. The other problem, and I think this has not been mentioned and needs to be, is that we are the third poorest city in the country. And having that amount of poverty brings certain problems. So you can't really compare us with everybody else. I think that it is clear that it is a lot of money, but it's not working, and so we need a change.
If elected as a new board member, I would want a full review, a full review of how the $26,000 per pupil is spent. And then we want to be looking at what are we supporting, what is it aligned to? When we think about what's happening in the school, we want to know what monies are actually getting into the classroom to benefit the students. The problem in our classroom is not just money, but we want to know what kind of money is getting into, getting to the children. We know that there are schools in Buffalo where children don't have books. There are schools in Buffalo where the children can't take books home because they have one class set, and the teacher has five classes. So we want to know, I would want, as a new board member, if elected, a full review of the money. And I understand there's legacy costs and all kinds of costs, but what we really need to examine, is that the right thing to do? Is that the proper thing to do? So, when we, if we feel, or if we figure out that the money is not really going to the classroom, we need to think about how we might adapt that, what we need to do. There's always room for negotiation. We make decisions constantly about financial matters. And sometimes we think those costs, we have to do that. But there is room for negotiation. We need people who are critical, who are critical thinkers, and really unpack some of these proposals and things that come to our district, and think about the impact and the implications of that versus what's happening in the classroom for our students. As Mayor Ruth Capzak said, we need to look at professional development for our principals and our teachers. We need to look at how that's followed. You know, there's some professional development, some teachers elect to go or not. Some of them choose to improve their practice or not. We've got to look at that. We've got to look at how much money we're putting into professional development, and how is that manifest itself in the classroom for our students.
The inherent figures this year, I heard $26,000 and $27,000. Whichever figure it is, I definitely dispute it, and this is a reason why. The basic regular district operations cost is about $13,763 per student. When you factor in the legacy causes that everyone has been talking about, now you have to add an additional $1,976 to that $13,000. And then when you factor in the debt services for our joint reconstruction projects, and all the different loans that we have there, you have to add another $4,004 to that $13,976. Even with all of that stuff, it only comes out to $19,743 per student. Now, having said that, let me say this: we additionally pay for students in agencies or agents, or in agencies who care for handicapped students at a cost of $39,290 per student, as a cost that we incurred for the, for handicapped student population. In addition to that, the district provides transportation to all privately managed charter schools and capital schools at no cost to that people. And we also provide textbooks for these same institutions. When you factor those things in, I don't think we're spending that money wisely, and I don't think we have money to do the job. So to say that we're spending $27,000 and we're just cornering that money, and this figure, these figures come from Barbara Smith, who is our CFO, someone with impeccable credentials and a reputation to match. So these figures are not fabricated, these figures are actually part of the budget. That's the real cost per student, not the $26,000 or the $27,000. It's more like $19,000. We're not even factoring all the other ancillary services that we provide at no cost to many schools that are not part of the Buffalo Public School system.
Would you repeat the question?
To do with the $26,000, and we've heard various figures now, but the fact that Buffalo spends about $26,000 per student, and the scholastic results don't seem to measure up in the eyes of many, how would you work to improve the outcome?
Okay. Just want to be sure. The Cross and Justice Jockist Report that was done on the district, a nationally renowned research company sponsored by Say Yes, said that the district dealt with student needs, low levels of instructional rigor, insufficient and inequitable dispersment of resources, like you have city hours top of the line, and you have other schools bottom of the barrel. What would I do? This year alone, we have over $6 million overage in Title I money already. Surplus money. Three of four came from last year. The district improvement plan. It writes out a plan that it's going to utilize to educate the district. The school improvement plan writes out a plan that it's going to use in the school. It writes out everything from the classes, to the testing, to the follow-up, to the support, the tutoring. For us to have $6 million overage in Title I money, which is specifically for children of poverty and special needs, something's not being done. And it's obvious if our academic rates continue to go down, as reported, and as we all know for the last 10, 15 years. $6 million overage if we're not finished with the year yet. So, what I would do is see that these plans are implemented, followed through, and people are accountable to do what they are supposed to do. Legacy costs and all this and that, whatever. The bottom line is, $6 million that could have went into the classroom is sitting in the surplus. Figure it out. That's my answer.
So far, the audience has been very courteous to everybody. Well, save the applause for the end. Our next panelist to ask the question is Ken Hamilton, a columnist with Nye with Gazette. And I think we'll start on the far end with Ms. Capzak.
The question is, and some of these questions have already been answered through the other questions that you've answered, so I'm going to skip down, and I'm going to try to combine two questions for expedience in. Uh, one, Dr. Williams is gone. And Pamela, Dr. Williams, Pamela Brown is here now. Well, her name is Pamela Brown also. We don't have to throw titles, otherwise you could call me that good-looking black ass.
But you know what we should address her as doctor, just like you just said Obama. It's President Obama. So let us give that respect. I wouldn't mean to be hostile, but she is a doctor. She's earned that, and let us give that woman her due. No disrespect. Thank you very much.
Very good. Then let me restate it. Superintendent Pamela Brown is the way the question is read. I didn't write the question.
But you know.
Move it to the person titles.
Thank you.
Well, I knew that anyway, Mr. First. But anyway, come on. I mean, the point is, is what they're going to be in the chase of education. I'm not here to be educated.
I'm sorry. I'm looking to be educated.
Very good. What is the opinion that you think of, what do you think, what is your opinion of the job that the superintendent of schools is currently doing? And in a, if there were no charter schools, then you would have to be teaching those students in your classrooms anyway, traditional public school. If you could give me a yes or no answer on that second question, are charter schools an asset or liability for the district? Ms. Capzak.
Okay. Your first question was the job that Dr. Pamela Brown is doing as a superintendent? Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, I think she's doing a great job for the time she's been on the job. In order to do a good job as a superintendent, you have to take what you came into, say, if it was a classroom. What she came into that office was, she's trying to recover from a disastrous situation. So I think based on the job that she's doing now in addressing situations such as the graduation rate, and career and college readiness for all children, that she's doing a good job. With the support that she needs, she could do an excellent job. Part two, your question about charter schools, you want to have a yes or no answer?
Yes or no? Asset or liability? You'd have to teach the kids anyway, would it increase costs, or would the cost be the same?
Well, right now, I would say it's a liability because the schools, the New York State is dictating how much money goes to public school, how much money is put into charter schools. We'd like to see all schools great, because we want all children to learn. But that is the answer, I think, to that question.
Her goals are to increase graduation rates, and she brought in Say Yes. So I agree with a lot of her goals. You may have a question about the rate at which change is happening, and I think it's too early to tell. We will have to review that. There's a discussion as to whether it's quick enough or not. There are major changes occurring in the central office and the way communication occurs between schools and the central office. In terms of charter schools, I think charter schools are good. They are a solution, but not a solution for all our children. We need to bring all our children up. And especially, I'm talking about our special needs children, English as a second language children, and yes, even our children with behavioral problems. We need to start working with them individually, finding out the problems, giving them the supports that they need to graduate. We need a shift in school climate and how we look at things.
Ms. Tit. Here's Tit.
I believe Dr. Brown has been here about nine months or so. Yes, I believe she's doing well at this point. She has a vision of a world-class education for all children. She's determined and have committed to reduce, increase the graduation rate. So yeah, I think she's headed in the right direction. In regards to your second question, I will answer it by saying, there's about 1,000 children on waiting lists for charter schools in Buffalo. Many of these children and families cannot afford private school. So what should they do? Just wait till the school system gets better? It's an asset for those families. We all want the best for our children. Charter schools is not the panacea. I believe charter schools, we still, they are public schools, and our children are in them, and we still have to be vigilant and hold them accountable for high academic learning. But what other choices do some parents have?
Thank you, Ms. MacIntyre. Again, please go to applause.
Dr. Brown has been here, as we just heard, a little bit over, over 10 months, and much to her credit, she has chosen first and foremost to develop her action plan for the district before beginning the process of developing our infrastructure to support that action plan. And that's why today we do have a structure in place with no specific personnel in those positions. And I commend her for that, because her first action was to envision what the district would look like as far as she's concerned, and then what kind of resources do I need? Are they here already? Is the personnel here yet? If not, then we have to create those positions moving forward in order for that structure to support the action plan that she envisions for the city of Buffalo. So she is methodically moving in a very, very positive way, and we have to be patient with her, as most of the board members are, and giving her the opportunity to move through this process and build her team that she needs in order for her to make the impact that she feels very confident she can make in our public schools.
And for the record, restate your position on charter schools.
Sure. My position on charter schools, given the current condition of the charter schools we have in play here in Buffalo, here, I cannot support charter schools.
Ms. McIntyre.
Yes. I think that Dr. Brown is a highly competent, intelligent lady. I consider her, in my mind, the kind of niece of rice of education. You know, she's ambitious, she's sharp, she knows what she's doing, and especially with good support, she'll be even better, as well as our district. In regards to charter schools, eight years ago, I was anti-charter, and they were the devil. That's just how I felt. But today, I have a child in agency placement, a child in health science charter, a child in a low-performing school, and a child in an okay school. So as a parent, I'm looking for what works best for my child, and who serves my child. We should not deny any parent the opportunity, but I will stand firmly on the fact that I believe in district-sponsored charter schools, because some charter schools, not all, have a tendency of waiving the IUP, Individual Education Plan, of a child with special needs. They kind of wave it and they manipulate it to, you know, fit their program, and that may not always be best for the child or the parent that really doesn't understand you got the IUP for a reason.
Ms. McIntyre. Asset or liability?
Asset.
Thank you. I can't seem proud of your name, Wendy.
Mistrata.
Ms. Mistrata.
If we're going to be particular.
Dr. Jagger.
I'm going to call, I'm going to give you all an honorary doctor.
I earned mine. You don't have to.
Doctor here, Mistrata.
Thank you. I think Dr. Brown is off to a good start. It is rather early. I do like two things in particular that she's done. One, bringing the budgets into the schools and giving them a say in their budget process. I'm a parent rep on the school-based management team at my school, and I was part of the process. Unfortunately, it wasn't long enough. We needed more time to truly look at all the options and the choices and make better informed decisions, but it's definitely a step in the right direction. Plus, the strategic plan process that she's working on with Say Yes has the potential to really work into a wonderful plan that's going to really move our schools forward to where we want them to be. Charter schools, as a parent of two children in the schools, I understand the frustration and the desire for charter schools. For that reason, I have to say they're an asset. I think we need to learn from the charter schools what they're doing well, and apply it to all of our schools, because I do not feel charter schools on their own solve the problems in our Buffalo public schools. So it really needs to be a partnership. We need to work with them. I'm sure there are funding issues that we need to resolve to make it more applicable for the entire city, but I do not see them as a liability.
Thank you. A minute of applause, please. A Dr. Sharon?
No, it's Sharon Belton-Cottman, mortgage banker. Okay. That's probably.
And I'm not going to ask you for which company. No advertising.
In regards to Dr. Brown, I've had the pleasure to work with her, and what we have to realize is that the footprint that Dr. Brown inherited was very deep engraved and engraved. Okay, so she walked into a district in June, I think it was July, and had to get the district up and running. Wasn't much time to reassess or do a lot of changing. She inherited the people that were there. Many of the principals were not used to even meeting with the superintendent. We had staff that was not used to working additional hours. They were used to receiving a salary and going home like it was nine to five. Since Dr. Brown has been there, she's working the formless, and she's pulling everything together. Unfair to Dr. Brown was the appointment of the distinguished educator. In true honesty, the distinguished educator should have been appointed the year before. And then after having the distinguished educator come in and make alliances with the staff, it caused the problem, the doctor, that you, as a new head of staff, would not, would have wanted to encounter. So as she works through all of these dimensions that she's dealing with, these ingrained footprints of people doing things the way they've been wanting to do it, and been allowed to do it for so many years, okay, she's in the process now of trying to groom them in the direction that the district needs to be moving. She has her credentials. She's already turned around two school districts. She came into this district and received an unwelcome welcoming by the community, and has been abused in the paper on a regular basis. Okay, so when I said Dr. Brown, it was not amazing, other than just giving her her props at that point. In regards to charter schools, I've sat back over the past year and watched things happen with the charter movement. Literally watched a hostile attempt to take over two of our public schools. I sat back and wondered where the community leaders were to make sure that East High School and Waterfront was not taken over. Okay? Because at the end of the day, as I sit in this office, I am responsible to protect the public trust of this community, to make sure that when the children go past a building, that that building is accessible to them. So for those that feel that charter school is the cat's meow, guess what? We're getting the children back on a regular basis that are not successful in the charter school. They do not have disciplinary schools for them. They do not have the proper programs for the students with learning disabilities. So until the charter schools can measure up to what we're doing, then we can have a conversation. But for this district, because our numbers reflect the values that they produce, it is not an asset.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner.
First, I got two minutes. I've got my two minutes.
And any personal attacks of the next person.
Yeah, I'm glad you called me Commissioner. Thank you. First of all, we really haven't seen enough of Dr. Brown. So far, what I've seen, the thing I like about her is that she's successful. I've been to a few community meetings, she's been there. She sometimes listens, she's asked to speak, she speaks. But I think, you know, the start happens at the board level. I've been on a board for seven years, and you have to have a board with a vision to introduce that vision that you want to see to that employee, because you only have one employee. A superintendent.
A superintendent to carry out or achieve. To do it. To set goals and evaluate those goals every so often, you know, to make sure that the goals that you're setting for her to do are accomplished. So I think that's one of the things that, you know, that's been lacking with the board. When I worked with the housing authority, I'm definitely accused of being too hands-on. But if I'm not hands-on and the board is in hands-on, then a lot of things fall through the cracks that shouldn't fall through the cracks. So I think that's what needs to happen, and I do agree with my colleagues here that she's doing a good job so far.
On the issue of charter schools, that's not a liability?
Well, I'm a firm believer in giving people an opportunity to go to school where they want. I am a big fan of the public charter schools. I think Westminster's been a great example of what the public school can do in charter schools. I think, you know, a lot of people, again, think that charter schools are a pain in the sea. Some of them work, some of them don't. So, I mean, it's a give and take. For somebody to say liability or asset, you know, I gotta stay in the middle of that and say, you know, I've gotta stay neutral because we really don't know enough of where the charter schools are going and where the public schools are going.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. James Sampson?
Call me James. Yeah, I think Dr. Brown's doing a good job. She's obviously very requalified, she's had a good experience base. I'm very familiar with the Harvard program that she graduated from, what that meant and what they're intended to do. But like we frequently do, I think we're asking the wrong question. The question really ought to be, is the board doing their job? And too often, we try to put the responsibility on one individual when I think we have to ask the question, is the board doing their job? And I would suggest they're not. And that's why you've got so much interest in this race. We are, is this board governing, or is it micromanaging? Is it getting deep into the weeds, or is it helping set the vision, holding it accountable, and engaging the community, the parents, and children? You know, we have an organizational structure that's for the school district, not unlike a lot of urban school districts, that was born in the last century, and I don't mean the twenty, uh, eighteen hundreds, I meant the eighteen hundreds. And so I think you wanna ask the question, do you have the right superintendent? I think we do. It seems we do. But is the board structured the way it ought to be? Does it operate the way it ought to operate to move forward? And is the organization structured such that we can write instruction into the classroom, engage communities, and be accountable?
On the issue of charter schools.
Obviously, they can trust the other charter school. I think they bring great assets to the community. And I would suggest to everybody up here who does not support charter schools, there's 8,000 students in this city who would not like to hear that what their educational opportunity experiences, they're not worthy of. And there's parents for every one of those kids. I was in an open house at West Buffalo Charter School two weeks ago.
You can finish the question.
I'll finish it, yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hernandez.
Oh, I'm sorry. What's your name?
I guess I have a different opinion than the rest of these individuals up here. I'm sure she's doing a fine job, but would I have supported hiring her? I think the problems with the district were too much to hire somebody with not the experience of a district with this many individuals in. We, I think we've all read the distinguished educator's action plan and what needs to be done. And it's something that I rail about, you know, talking to the people in my district, that you have a disconnect between the administration down in City Hall and the people on the ground in the schools. Who should have been handling that right when she got here? And they should have a plan to get that in place, if she had the experience. That's my feeling. And unfortunately, I hear things from people in City Hall, that they're not too encouraging. So I have to call it what like I see it. I'm an honest individual, and I get my information, and I, these people are credible, and I make my own determination. But, you know, if I am a board member, I will work with her because that's what I am entrusted to do. So that being said, onto charter schools. You have two that are performing pretty well. They also have a higher socioeconomic level to their students. The rest of them aren't doing that well. And like Ms. Gillik said before, if you want to tie achievement to anything, tie the socioeconomic level of the individual, and there you will find the achievement level. Okay, so it doesn't matter what school they go to, charter, public, Catholic, okay? And then even in terms of the charter schools and them not being able to deal with certain students, in my district at Salford High School, they had to take 18 under-credited seniors from charter schools this year. They would have had a high 60% graduation rate. It'll go down to the lower 50s. You just see stagnation when you see it in the paper.
Mr. Harris.
So in terms of that, not an asset or liability.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm told that we do have a lot of audience questions. We have two more questions from the panelists, and because of our time constraints, first Peter Kenny has graciously allowed us to have the auditorium separate from the non. So get as many questions in as possible. We're going for the limited answers for one minute. I will be timing you very strictly. I'll give you a 10-second queue when it's on to go, and then be clear to everybody at the end of the 10 seconds, we'll have to move on. Claudine Ewing has our next question, and I think we're all about here. So Claudine has the next question.
So during this school year, we heard a lot about sex education. Just take it now, let's talk about the children, what needs to happen. There was a survey done of Buffalo public school students in middle school, and it was disturbing. It was disturbing. It showed that so many of them are involved in sexual relations in middle school, high school, the teen pregnancy. So this board has to deal with the issue of sex education, the curriculum, and should it be changed? What should it include? If you can talk to us about what is your plan? Does it need to change? And if so, how?
First answer is Belton-Cottman. And then we'll go this way. Again, second.
This year, and it's interesting to note that typically, most people only see what goes on at the board meeting. No one comes to the committee meetings. But this year, we are making sure that each one of our seniors receive a special course on sexual health in regards to the concern that we received with that survey that the board did. So as far as what we're going to do, we're going to make sure that each senior leaves out the door this year at least educated. What we're going to do next year is we're going to spread that, and we're gonna try to move it forward. As far as the curriculum is concerned, that's being handled in student support, and we are moving it forward, and we have to add additional things to make sure that we can put it in place, such as having meetings with parents and things like that. But we do recognize that report, and we are doing things, trying to assist our students with that issue.
This is a great question. Thank you, Claudine, for asking it because, you know, a month or so ago, I saw the paper and I saw that we were gonna hang out in the school district as a cure for the sex that's going on in schools. Well, it took me about four and a half minutes to look up on the computer a program that's Mississippi. State of Mississippi, with the help of the school system, started a program called Chart. And you can look it up, pretty easy to find. Children's Health Irresponsible Teens. And with this program and with the state, with the level of, with state help providing fund, providing funding, which I've already brought this to one of the assemblymen in New York State to look at this program. It's a, it's a program of not only sex education, but, oh, I'm sorry, sex education, but abstinence. And I think that's what we needed, seniors too late.
May I both buy that?
This is not one question I thought I would be answering. Getting back to the issue of the board doing its job, if I'm not mistaken, about a week or two ago, there was a presentation about health and wellness in the schools. And this district is woefully not in compliance with state standards and the policies that actually the district has adopted. Sexual activity in middle school is a public health issue, it's a wellness issue. And when you pass a policy, when the state has a requirement, and the board passes the policy, and then nothing happens to it, that's a question that should be directed to the board when they're not enforcing what is already on the books that ought to be done, and we know how to do it.
Yes, I'll just echo Mr. Sampson's sentiments on the issue. When I went to school, I can remember my sex education class at in sixth grade.
Can you hear me, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. When I was in school, and I attended a Buffalo public school, Triangle Academy, I was 28, in sixth grade, we taught sex education. We were taught every nuance of sex, even though we probably knew it at the time what was going on. But that education and that understanding that I got from that put a lot of things into perspective. So you have to be able to not, like, be a senior and understand that because they don't understand all that stuff. They really do. You have to start it a lot younger. And I'm talking like 30 years ago, almost 40 years ago for me. So obviously, our students are a lot more advanced because of TV and the internet and all those, those means that they have at their disposal. You have to be able to educate them very early to the right mindset in terms of sex and that role it plays in their life.
Thank you. Because television today, the internet, sex education has to be taught at an earlier age, we have this in committee now. And I think what we're waiting for with the committee is to have more parental involvement as for, as it relates to sex education and when it should start. And I will tell you that I had instances at one of my schools in my district where children were touching each other in grades two. So we have to take a close look at where we should start. We have to involve the parents and the community in this piece so that we are addressing the needs of the children. And health is important. If they're involved in sex and don't have any idea as to what's going on, then we have health issues coming to play. So it should be in the curriculum at an earlier age.
I agree that we need sex education in the schools, and it should be introduced at age-appropriate levels. We have the highest pregnancy rate in this, in the state, and we also have the highest drop-out rate. I think the two are very much connected. When a child drops out and has, is very pessimistic about their future, they do, they take risks that we wouldn't want them to take. If we're talking about our students, now that they need sex education, but they need support from our staffs. If we know of any child that is having problems, we need to find out what is the problem, what is the solution, work with them, and give them what they need to support them.
We need sex education. It needs to be age-appropriate. High school is probably too late. We need the proper and appropriate instructions, perhaps some collaboration with the medical profession, and the course we need to have some, we need to have some sensitivity to how it's delivered, and sensitivity to the diversity of the families in the school district.
Yeah, I'll be the first to admit that with regards to sex education in our public schools, we do have a lot of work to do in that area. I think the policies that we do have need to be changed to include important information on transmental diseases and the consequences of having unprotected sex. And be irresponsible, you know, for your choices, the things that we do. This is all information that's important for our students, and I support sex education, but I also support that it should be age-appropriate.
I believe 14 to 11 and 14 to 15 have the highest HIV and AIDS in the county, as well as registered in the country. I believe that we should have a comprehensive sexual education program starting as early as fourth grade. As one that has been in the school and you and me, I can't say a word, but you just cannot believe what transacts. And if you don't believe me, ask a teacher, from kindergarten to third grade, can they send a boy or girl to the bathroom, or a boy or a boy to the girl, bathroom, or a girl to the girl? It's horrible. So we need to address it because it is a major health issue, and we just have to look at the realities of what's going on. Thank you.
20 years ago, when I was a graduate student here, I was involved in a program that took international students into public schools so that they could talk about their culture. At that time, I met a middle school student who was pregnant, 20 years ago. It just mystifies me that we're still discussing this. In terms of how that's, parents and community partners have to be part of the solution. And I believe that part of it is after-school programs for all kids. Most of the students who are finding themselves in compromising situations are doing it in the afternoon when their parents are at work. So let's keep them busy and out of trouble.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ken, you will have our last question in one minute, and we'll start with Mr. Hernandez's first person answer.
All right, we have seven questions that we're remaining on this. I think it compresses them all to the essence of the board. It's simple. It is really, really simple. What is the one thing that you would do to encourage students to want to come to school and to graduate? Part, second part is, does socioeconomic conditions hinder education, or is there a reason to work hard for one? Mr. Hernandez.
I think I caught the first one. You may have to repeat the second one. The first one said that, what would I say to the student to encourage him to come to school?
Well, say it as a board member.
As a board member. Well, I would say as a non-traditional student myself, who didn't get a college degree until I was 40, education is extremely important. You can't do anything in this world unless you understand it.
And the socioeconomic conditions call you not to want an education, or is there a motivator?
I don't understand the question. What is it?
We're gonna have to move on.
What is the question?
The question is, do socioeconomic conditions hinder one from getting an education, or is it a reason, first one, to work hard for an education?
Oh, are you, okay, you're saying that the reason why they don't want to get education is because of the socioeconomic condition, or is it because they just don't want to? Correct?
Well, I'm responding to what was, does the socioeconomic conditions play a role in the, and whether or not inner-city school kids can get an education?
Of course they do. Because if a child has personal problems at home, how could they concentrate on anything they need to do in school?
Mr. McIntyre.
Of course they do. That was simple.
What would you do to encourage students, as a board member, to want to come to school and graduate?
Okay, one of the things, I would try to get relevant curriculum so they can enjoy coming to school and learn versus just being tested and pressured. That's the answer.
All right, we'll skip that second part for its previous.
Why do you? The socioeconomic has no impact on the child learning. You know, that's a great myth and lie. And if you want to check it out, you can go to school 81 in the city of Buffalo. They have a very high priority rate, but they have a principal that's on it, and that's one of the best schools in Buffalo, and I would shout, the socioeconomic conditions is a lie, and the child.
Thank you. No applause, please.
Encouraging attendance, I think I would start by emphasizing, say yes. It should be changed in conversations around every single kitchen table. No longer do parents have to tell their kids, we can't possibly send you to college. Now we can. So that, that hope is now there. Second, the socioeconomic conditions, I want to talk about the English language learners. Some of the struggling families in our district, Panta International School 45 has one of the best attendance rates in the city. And they're battling very difficult odds, and they're succeeding.
Ms. Belton-Cottman.
One of the things that I would like to do, this is my monopole, I guess I'll get the opportunity to work with that, is to, is to put more fun in school. And you, by that I mean by using some of the modern technology items such as your iPads, the computers and things like that. Oftentimes, if you allow children to utilize these things, they don't really even know that they're learning. So I'd like to see more fun. Once we encourage children, when children are engaged, when they come to school, they're engaged, they are encouraged to come back and learn.
And the second part?
The second part is, is that whatever the child's state or his socioeconomic condition is not an issue. The issue is, can we educate the child off of inside the building and expose them to new horizons? I do not feel that anyone is limited based on their socioeconomic condition.
Thank you. Permission.
Thank you. Repeat the question for me.
What would you do to encourage students to want to come to school and to graduate?
Well, I think what Scottman had said is true. You need to encourage your kids to use the technical advances that we had. I have a granddaughter who's two, six years old, and she's having fun with her computer, and they don't even know that they're learning. You know, there's learning aids on the computer that they're using, they don't even realize it. Also, the extracurricular activities that we need to bring back to the schools.
Second part, socioeconomic conditions?
No, I don't think so. I think, I think that's not an issue because, let's face it, most of the children are in the school classroom longer than they're with their parents, and I don't really think that that's an issue. If children are, you can hand them, Dr. Mastrutti said, they come from a different country, they're here, they want to learn, and I think it's the same thing no matter where you look at children.
So your answer is no. Mr. Sampson.
I understand the question. I think if you wait till someone's entering the ninth grade and comes to school, it's way too late. I think discussion has to be given when they start from school, and the messages are gonna come from a board member, it's gonna come from a parent who feels supported, it's gonna come from a teacher who has the resources, and it's gonna come from a principal who is engaged with the students. I think socioeconomic issues too frequently is used as an excuse. Sometimes they're issues we have to deal with, but I think every child can learn, has a right to learn, and we owe them an education. Public education is the great equalizer.
No applause, please. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Sampson said it correctly. I wouldn't just talk to the student, I would talk to the teacher, the principal, about building a relation based on trust and respect. And once you have that esteem, you trust the teacher, correct information, they will learn.
So you're answering both questions simultaneously?
No, no, I mean, it turned to socioeconomic degree to determine if I, I grew up with it. I had a mother who went to college when I was ten years old, who showed the path to education. So that's the determining factor, is your parent, even if they are poor, you and the students.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Captain.
Thank you. I know you can't win tonight. Okay, I'm an advocate for pre-K programs in school. I encourage children to go to school on a daily basis, and if we get them in school early and instill in them how important it is to be educated, then they will want to come to school. And we must involve. Have to put fun for the children, and you can teach and make it fun. Now, as for socioeconomic concern, I didn't realize how powerful I was until I got older. So therefore, I started learning in pre-K. And my mother instilled in me that we had to learn, and you did everything you could to learn, or the consequences were there when you got home. So therefore, socioeconomic, you know, you can have a degree, and my mother did not have a degree, but she made sure that all of her children.
Thank you, Ms. Captain. Doctor.
I think that we have to have our, we have to have our schools become community schools. We need to have services that are there for our students, such as medical, and that these services can also be, the community can also receive these services. I think that we need adult education courses to bring parents in. We need to open our evening for community groups that meet. All our children have different gifts, and we have to reward and encourage those gifts. At this point in time, it seems as though the answer is a region's scholarship entrance. There are many ways to be a good citizen and a successful person.
Socioeconomic conditions?
Well, I think rather than socioeconomic, it's either books in the house, what is the attitude towards school. Sometimes people who are in the lower income are there because they've had some difficulty in school, and therefore, we need to help make it easier for them. We have to provide for their children, we have to make books available for the children.
Thank you very much. Harris, too.
Doctor. That's okay. I forgive you, my brother. I forgive you. It's all right. It is all right. Okay, to encourage young folks, as a board member, I would continue to do what I do every day in my life, is to put myself out as a role model with transparency, integrity, and honesty. I would share my story from a teen mom all the way to attaining and earning the highest education degree possible. I would also help them to understand what effort means and perseverance. A lot of young people turn off from school because if they can't get it right the first time, they're turned off from it. And sometimes, they don't have teachers who will acknowledge that and support that and help them with that. So I would teach them about effort and perseverance. It can be done. In regards to socioeconomic factors, no, students or families' current condition never dictated their potential. There's just too many examples out there to show that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Our first question from our audience, Pauline, in one minute, enter, and we'll start with Sukiyama.
Actually, this is one for those who are already sitting on the board, so four, three, people who are here. Yes. It was. Actually, it were all of those. According to one of the audience members, there's dysfunction on the board, so why should you be re-elected? And also, name one accomplishment. Why should you be re-elected?
First of all, there is, yeah, there is a belief that perhaps there is some dysfunction on the board, I disagree with it. There's much that we've accomplished a great deal in the last four or five years, just to mention a few. I can tell you that we have, we have now student support teams in all different schools that run out of different, in our schools in the district. Social workers have increased by twenty-five percent over the last.
Mr. Hernandez, could you use your microphone, please?
Over the last three years alone. School resources offices in every school, our attendance rate is up, suspension rates down, graduation rates up. You know, we are doing the job that we're supposed to do, is are we setting the woods on fire with these statistics? No, we're moving in the right direction, I think that's what's important. Now, if you're asking me what specifically I have done in terms of increase, well, I spearheaded the resolution that called for every child, regardless of the socioeconomic status, to have a free lunch at school, which is something we didn't have until that resolution hit the floor. So I'm very proud of that.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Hernandez, I don't think the board is dysfunctional. When people don't agree, it's not a sign of dysfunction. Everyone has a right to disagree, but then we move on because we're there for the education of our children and helping our families. As far as what, the one thing that I'm most proud of is the fact that I have gotten the career and technical program, the expansion of that, whereas we had it at one point, it was dropped, and now we're back on the right path with the expansion of that program, and I'm very proud of that.
This was Mark Gomitry.
I also agree that there, I don't know what the misconception that we are dysfunctional. I've been sitting on the board for a little over two years, and I respect each person on the board. I'm concerned about moving forward that that will not be the case because people, certain candidates have illustrated that they are not respective of people and differences. We don't have that problem now. As far as one of the major things that I feel that I've done for the district in sitting in the seat for the Ferry District is to advocate for the children in my district. Particularly making sure that, and I'm gonna go back to this, that East High School is still available to the children in my district. We have three board members that are from East High School, and at the end of the day, if we not advocated for that school, it would be closed as a public school. And the conversation around, conversation around public and private schools, at the bottom line is, it's about big bucks for big businessmen as far as charter schools are concerned.
Mr.?
You want to ask me a housing question? I'll get him a next question.
Our next question, and it will concern the incumbents as well as others. Specifically, what is your position on residency for teachers and staff at the schools? And for the incumbents, how did you previously vote on that particular issue?
We were gonna say we're sued guilty for this time, so.
I don't believe in the residency rule. I understand why a lot of people want it, but I think that what we are looking for is the very best teachers that we can find, and if we restrict the pool that we are looking at, it is not to our advantage. I think we need to consider everyone and get the best of everyone that is out there. No restrictions.
No restrictions, you would vote yes in that sense, if you're a board, on the board, right? Ms. Tigg, Ms. Dr. Harris Tigg.
The residency issue is interesting. On the one hand, we do want the very best teachers for our students, and we don't want barriers that would prevent us recruiting the very best and retaining the very best teachers. On the other hand, though, when a teacher lives and work in the, live in the district they work in, their investment becomes real, it becomes relevant, it becomes evident.
Was that a yes or no?
That was my answer regarding residency. You know, on one hand, yes. We want to, we want to make sure we get, on one hand, we want them to live there because we want to see their investment. If their children attend the district they work in, that's good stuff. You know, there's some assurance that things will, due diligence will happen. But we don't want barriers from the best teachers coming to teach our children. Look at where we are now. If we limit that, we're limiting the success of our children. So we want choice.
Would you vote yes or no?
I want to vote for a city that's conducive for folks that want to live here, and they have a choice.
Okay, well, I sponsor the resolution to repeal the residency rule for many reasons. One in particular is that the residency rule is not enforceable. There's just no way that you can keep track of who's living in the city, who's not. If you make a move on any teachers, we knew there were many administrators and teachers that were not living in the city. To make a move on these folks, in litigation alone would be, the numbers would be unbelievably high, so to move on them would be crazy. Second of all, I believe that there shouldn't be any barriers. I think that we pay these individuals to come in and do a job. Where they live is their business, has nothing to do really with what they do in the classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
I believe in residency. If you're already working in the district, you live where you live, but if you get hired to work here, you should move into the city, because it makes a big difference when the kids see you at the store, the mosque, the church. It makes a big difference when they see you, as I've experienced, going to the store, church, and mosque, seeing my students, you're part of the community. It's simple, is that those that are already working, they're safe. With all new employees, yes. If you want to work here, move here, don't just come in, use the bathroom, flush the toilet, make a dump, and run up my laundry room.
I do not support the residency requirement for the reasons mentioned already, but I'd also like to add that one of the big challenges with it is, where do we expect them to live? How does a teacher who lives within the city but lives on Kenmore, more part of the community, but teaches in South Park Elementary, how are they a part of that community? Someone who lives in Kenmore but teaches in North Buffalo may be more a part of the community. So that is one of the main issues that I have with the residency requirement. What part of the city do we expect them to live in? When my child goes to Cityonder's in the fall, I'm not moving. So how do we enforce that?
So you would vote yes or no?
I would vote against residency requirement.
Very good. Mrs. Dalton.
The residency requirement, as far as the vote, the vote happened before I sat on the board, the same day they did it before they had the vote. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to vote. As I look back, I think, when I look at this residency issue, I have major concerns because of the rights that our forefathers fought to be able to live wherever they want to. But when I look at the conditions of the schools, I'm probably think that maybe we can have a, some sort of a ratio, and we presently have sixty-one percent of the teachers living inside the city of Buffalo, contrary to popular belief. One thing I'd like to note is that, once the board did pass the residency requirement, there were upwards of two thousand address changes within a ten-day period. So whether you thought it was working, it wasn't. So as far as what I would do is, if I had the opportunity to vote, I would first of all talk to my constituents and find out what their opinions are. I would also like to see some data that supports that when people live in a neighborhood, and at the end of the day, I'd make that decision based on what my constituents prefer.
Thank you, Ms. Sharon.
Yes, we're passing this one, we're using one mic here. They're not, this is not an issue about living in a residency rule when it has to do with policemen. Policemen living in your neighborhood, that's great. That's a different residency issue, which they don't live in a neighborhood. But, you know, I think where somebody lives doesn't make any difference, but we need to expand the quality of teachers that come into the city. I would definitely vote against the residency requirement. I think that we need to get the best and the brightest. We're going outside the city to find a superintendent. So now that she's here, she lives with this, you know.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson.
I support the residency requirement. Let me give you the reason why. Say yes to education in Buffalo is an incentive for families to move into the city of Buffalo, and this board supports that. And I think it's inconsistent to support that and not support residency requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I wouldn't support a residency rule. Explain why. You should be free to live where you choose. Also, if you're gonna bring in the best quality teachers to this district, and they need to come from all areas of this, of West New York. And I would say that you would probably get better qualified teachers now because there's not that many jobs out there, so people are fighting for those jobs. So you're gonna get really high-quality teachers. And I worked at Lancaster High School. I'm a part of the fabric of that high school, okay? I go to the kids' extracurriculars and things when they're in my classroom to support them. So saying that I'm not a part of that, that's incorrect. It depends on the individual and the relationship you have with that student. Build a relationship with that student, that's what I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as you know, I voted for the residency to be lived in because we, at instances in our schools, where we needed a forensics teacher, for instance, and we could not find one that lived in the city. The forensics teacher had to drive a half hour every day to get into Buffalo, but was here. However, when they said you have to live in the city, he said, "No, I cannot move my family from the home we now live." family from the home we now live." When we lifted the residency, when I voted to do that, this teacher came back, and our forensics program was up and running again. If we don't want the best and the brightest, then we limit ourselves. We would not have the special education teachers that we so dearly need if we, every teacher had to live in the city. And as Ms. Scottman said, there was a lot of residence changes the following week after it was lifted. So we want to make sure people invest, though, in the community, let the children know that you are there for them, regardless of where you live.
Okay, uh, because of the lateness of the time, I think this would probably be our last question again, one minute, and then we will start with Mr. Mash.
This is a question from the audience once again. How will you improve transparency on the Board of Education, specifically around achievement data and budgeting details? In other words, the people want to know what's happening, so how would you?
It's a big, it's a question everybody wants to know. Where's my tax dollars being spent? Uh, a while ago, there was something called project-based budgeting, and I think that's something we need to look at. And, and the other thing is, what we did with the housing authorities, we, we implemented a S and B scheme, where the building itself, the manager handled the money, and it was better control from the administration of where their money was being spent. And I think that that's a big issue with, with the consumer. We're paying taxes, we need to go with the tax dollars.
One of the things I think would be helpful is if they started having meetings outside City Hall, in places like this, in schools, we've got beautiful schools around the city, so the deliberations and discussions can become more accessible to parents and families. I can read budgets pretty well, and I can particularly read municipal budgets pretty well. Reading the Buffalo Public School budget is an incomprehensible document. And, I mean, we can't even agree whether it's twenty-six thousand dollars a year or nineteen thousand dollars a year. So putting it in terms that people can understand it, both from a budget point of view, but then a outcome point of view, I went through all of the outcome rating data, and it is very, very hard to try to figure out exactly what that data means, and putting it in a way that could drive parents' decisions about what schools they want to send their kids. I looked at that stuff, and I, for the life of me, I could not determine what that information would mean to a parent if they wanted to send their child to a particular school.
Mr. Harris.
Yeah, I guess Mr. Sampson's right, because I am ready, and, you know, it's very long. I, I think that the first thing you do is, you just have to be accountable. You have to be fiscally accountable to the, sorry, sorry, you have to be fiscally accountable to the taxpayers. You can't be worried about a mistake you made and try to cover it up. You have to be honest. And when there is a problem, you have to, like, I just think that you have to admit your mistake and go on. You know, so much in this society, people want to cover up what they do and lie about what they do or not get caught with what they do.
Honesty.
Honesty, yes, be honest, you have to be accountable to the position, and that's, that's what the position it takes.
Thank you. Accountability and transparency is most important, and looking at data. And when you look at data, you have to have someone there to explain it to you. And I, as I mentioned in a forum a couple nights ago, I believe that we should move the board meetings around different sections of the city so people will be able to attend. However, in moving around the city, we also would have to move the student achievement meeting, the finance and ops meeting, because this is where all of the data is explained in those meetings. So we need more people to attend those meetings, and if it means moving the meetings where it's more accessible to people, I'm called for that.
Thank you. Dr. Gill.
We need more communication with the community. We need transparency. When the public wants some information, it should be handed out immediately, there should be no delay. If we increase our communication, we could do that in many ways. If there was a website with all of the reports, or if there, there were reports handed out during the year, or would be available. I think we need to find more ways to communicate with the community. Perhaps everyone should have a website to let them know what, what are they doing on the board, and what were their reasons for voting in certain ways.
The people have a right to know. And so if I am elected as a board member, those same streets I walked with those petitions, those same block clubs that I met with, I would be taking information to them and getting dialogue with them and getting feedback from them that I would then take back to the board. I like the idea of moving the board meetings around, but as an elected official, it's my responsibility to get that information to them, and I will do that.
Mr. Hernandez.
Sure. I, I can't think of any district in the entire region that goes through the accountability scrutiny that the Buffalo Public Schools go through. We have an audit every year, independent audit every year, the publishers are part of the, of all the, uh, the areas of the public, public school system, which is available to, to the public. We produce an annual budget that's also available to the public. Buffalo News does a great job in reporting, some of the things that are happening in the budget. We have hearings and the council on the actual budget. So if there's any transparency or accountability going on with Buffalo Public Schools and its budget, I think we do a pretty good job.
Thank you very much. Mr. McIntyre. Would you repeat the question, please? What would you do to increase transparency of the operations of the Buffalo School Board?
Okay, well, as you know, it's on public access, and I would utilize that a lot, but they have a thing called FOIA, Freedom of Information, I believe legislation. You fill out a paper, within twenty-four hours, they give you the information. In this district, they don't. They refuse to sue me for it. That's what go on. I would stop that practice. Simple as that.
The, the district has a very good chief financial officer, Barb Smith, and she does do good presentations, and the last time I saw her present on the budget was actually because the district parent coordinating council organized a parent meeting for it. So I think that the district needs to be a little more proactive and meet her out on a regular basis to share what's going on.